We'll need to do roll call.
Council please cast vote for roll call. Eight council members are present mayor.
Thank you very much. So this is a special meeting. Okay, thank you.
I will, I can do that. Landholm. Partoso. Gifford. Nielsen. Sawyer. Washburn. Lathrop. Orice. Carlson. Five are present, that is a four.
Thank you. All right, thanks everyone for being here. This is a special meeting to go over updating regards to our comprehensive plan and our UDC. We do have the representatives from House Sale Levine and then, you know, Jennifer's in the back, back there as well. And so I'm just going to go ahead and go ahead guys whenever you're ready.
Sure. Okay, can everybody hear me better?
Yes.
Okay. In one word, what, what do you like or what's the greatest thing about Fremont? What's the greatest strength? So just one word, write that down on the sheet. We're going to come collect it here in a few minutes. And then, as I said, we're going to do some other questions just to get a temperature from the group, get an idea of what some of the key issues are, key opportunities for the community. And then the last bit is just next steps and how to participate moving forward. Jack, I'll give him a few minutes. Okay, so up first, just a little bit overview of the project and the planning process itself. Like I said, my name is Nick Davis. I'm with House Levine. Do you need to? That's the, I'm with House Levine. We're a planning and design firm. We specialize in doing these types of plans, comprehensive plans. Teaming with HDR who specializes in long range transportation planning. And then also, as I'd mentioned, Jackie Wells is the project manager on the UDC. So we have three different projects that are occurring at the same time. I know many of you know this already. It's just, just an update to let you know kind of where we're at, what we're doing. So for these three projects, the first one is the comprehensive plan. This is the, the vision document. It's a policy guide that this both groups here would be using, both the city council and Plink Commission to make some of the bigger decisions about the types of developments that are appropriate. You know, where you should be setting aside funding in the future for specific improvements, be it for roadway. You know, maybe it might be setting aside land for parks or open space in the future. So all these different projects are going to be guided by the recommendations inside, thank you, recommended, recommendations from inside this, this planning document. It's also going to provide context for city leaders to look back at what the vision statement was as it was developed with the community. So all these different events that we're here to do this week and what we've done in the past. What we'll continue to do through this planning process is going to inform the recommendations that we write. And this will be something you can point back to. And at this time, this is what the, the residents and the businesses, you know, of Fremont wanted to see and, and we're hoping to see over the next, you know, however long the vision statement wants to last probably 20 years. That's what the intent of this document is. It's not regulatory. It will provide the objectives and the strategies that it's going to take to achieve some of these, these goals. But it isn't regulatory and that's why it ties perfectly into what the UDC is, which is a regulatory, your unified development code. So when, when we establish these policies and we agree on them as a group, then they're going to get codified later on in a separate document inside the UDC. So doing these on a similar timeline is very helpful to, to make sure that your code is in alignment with your comprehensive plan. Some of the core elements that this document will include when it starts to come together, it's going to include land use and development. We're going to address annexation. There'll be a section on housing and economic development. We'll look at the community facilities and the infrastructure needs. And then also there's a sub area component for the downtown, which provide even more detail for how that area could either redevelop or you know, be improved along the public right away. You know, what are some of the challenges that the downtown faces and how can this plan provide some, some guidance on, on moving forward? The long range transportation plan and I'll let Jason talk a little bit more about this in our Q and A. And if you have any specific questions, and I know we have questions for you. But again, that's a guiding document. It's going to tie into the, the comprehensive plan. So when we're thinking about transportation improvements, those should be tied with where is the future growth area or where are we currently facing some maintenance issues or roadway condition issues? So how do these two work together? And that's a big part of our challenge working as a team. We want to address it, address key issues identified by the community. So a lot of the feedback that we've already received through this process is, is what we want to fold into these documents. So this isn't us telling you what it should be. This is us collecting as much information as we possibly can and then using our, our experience doing these types of plans and best practices to provide the recommendations that we think will resolve these types of issues. We'll propose strategies and projects to promote multimodal transportation. That's something that we've heard even from the community at the very beginning. You know, different ways of moving through the community, not just in a vehicle, not just in a bike, but all these different components about how someone's moving through a community and, and how you get from one destination to another. And then just making recommendations that follow end dot standards. I mean, that's something that we would always do, but just making sure that the projects that we're recommending are in line with what the, the state and the DOT ultimately are looking to, to achieve. As I had mentioned, the UDC, the unified development code is also being done. It's basically in a one month delay behind the complaint. So, or maybe a little bit more depending on where we're at in the process. But the idea is it's sort of lagging behind the conference of plan. So it can respond to the recommendations that are coming out of what we're producing. So it's going to be a tool that'll enforce these planning decisions that we're ultimately going to make inside the conference of plan. It's going to promote or restrict certain, you know, industries, there might be different uses or, you know, rethinking how districts are currently configured. It might just be allowing different kinds of development standards. So there's all these different aspects inside the unified development code that we need to look at. Controls on density of households in an area. These are just some of the things that the, the UDC, you know, needs to address as we start to rewrite it. And I know working with these two groups, I'm sure you have many, many other issues or other ideas about what you'd like to see updated in that UDC. So that's what we're hoping to get a little feedback on tonight. And then just promotes the, the public health, safety and welfare of the community. It's a core component to make sure that your codes are legally defensible and that they are serving the public in the best way possible. A refresh of where we've been. So just a, just a quick hit of the, the steps that have already been taken. We had a project initiation and a project kickoff a few months back. And when we were here, we did some staff kickoff meetings. We did a city tour on a bus and kind of drove around the community and you know, really, really were able to take in some of the challenges or some of the, the ideas or opportunities that are out there. We had a steering committee kickoff meeting. We met with the elected officials. So we met with this group and had a discussion, kind of a kickoff, letting you know what we'd be doing over the next few months. We conducted several key stakeholder interviews. So those are stakeholder interviews that were set up by the city or representatives of those that just, you know, had an interest in the town, maybe own a business or have lived here for a long time or, you know, had this, this idea in a certain area. So those were groups that we started to meet. We conducted focus groups and we had a business community workshop as well. And then we did some student and youth workshops, which were, which were great. Got a lot of great feedback from, you know, ultimately the future residents and the future business owners of this town and heard what they wanted to see. And then still out there are these DIY kits, these do it yourself kits, gives you an opportunity to facilitate your own meeting. So I know COVID has really been a challenge in terms of certain types of outreach. That's a way for people to conduct their own groups, maybe within their, their bubbles or people that they feel comfortable with. You can get a larger group together and conduct very similar outreach efforts that we've done for the rest of the project. And that continues to be out there and something that the, the city's offering. So if you, if you know someone who wants to do that, you know, reach out to Jennifer, she can certainly get that to you. And then real quick, just, just an overview of the process itself. So we have a six step process. We've completed the project initiation. We're, we're kind of in the middle of these three steps, just again, because of some of the COVID related issues. We're sort of moving around key items. We're wrapping up the community engagement this week with a community visioning workshop that we're hosting tomorrow night and a, and a workshop, a series of workshops targeted to help meet with the Hispanic community, make sure that we get their feedback as well. So those three or four workshops that we're hosting over the course of this week will close out the community engagement process. We're very close to wrapping up the existing conditions memo, which I'm going to give you a brief overview of tonight. And then we'll move on into the community vision, goals and policies. And as part of that, it'll be really rolling up all of the different feedback points that we've received through this entire project and starting to establish very clear and concise vision and goals moving forward before we do any other plan making. The existing conditions report overview and, and this is a document that's going to be provided to the city soon. And once that's provided, this will be available to everybody. It'll be posted on the project website. Council can look at it, the steering committee can look at it, plan commission, anybody that wants to give us some feedback or just get a sense for what the foundation is for this, this comprehensive plan process, process and the, the UDC. So just a quick look at the demographic trends, Fremont's population is growing. A large portion of the population are ages forty five to sixty four. Fremont is experiencing growth in households earning seventy five thousand or more over the last nine years and a decline in the households earning below twenty five thousand. Employment trends, the top employment sectors in the city include healthcare and social assistance, retail trade, educational services and manufacturing. Manufacturing makes up two hundred and roughly two hundred and sixty, two hundred and seventy new jobs in terms of growth from twenty fourteen to twenty eighteen. And manufacturing has seen the highest growth in the primary jobs since twenty fourteen. So it's up, up pacing a lot of these other sectors that are very popular sectors here, but just, just not at that rate. One thing I want to note is I go through this, there's several different data sources that we've used for this. The American Community Survey. So I know with the nuisance data coming out, we're still working off of twenty eighteen data, although the census, census is done and completed, that data is not available for use in this type of project yet. We're hoping that as we work through this project, that, that data becomes available and we can, you know, potentially update some of this for our, our projections or even when we get into some of the models. For housing trends, the predominant housing type in Fremont is owner occupied, single family detached homes primarily built before nineteen seventy. Housing vacancy in the county is below a healthy rate of six points, or six to seven percent, which indicates a need for housing in the county and in the city. And home values in Dodge County have increased ninety nine point four percent since nineteen ninety nine. The retail, industrial and office trends that we've seen, retail is at its highest lease rate in the past ten years. Industrial rents have declined in the recent year, in recent years. Office space is limited and has become more expensive between twenty twenty and twenty twenty one. When we look at the existing land use, which is something that we produce as part of our field reconnaissance and working with staff to get, you know, fine tuned. The primary land use within the city is residential. Much of the city is already built out, leaving limited opportunities for new development within the city's municipal boundaries. And what we mean by that is by the current municipal boundary. So if we start to look at growth areas, obviously that's going to change where, where some opportunities are, but inside the current municipal boundary, there's just limited opportunities for what you would consider like greenfield or new development. Lane using compatibility, there are areas of heavy industrial use that are but single family residential uses primarily in the south of the city. And looking at that, some of the current zoning and much of the suburban commercial zoning district consists of single family homes, which does not align with the definition of this district as a non-residential district. And even beyond that, there's residential land uses that exist inside of the general industrial zoning districts, which allow for heavy industrial uses that can cause significant, you know, environmental impacts, you know, noise and nuisance impacts, a lot of different impacts on these, on these two uses. When we look at the transportation, accurate crossings for BNSF and the UPR are freight lines often conflict with vehicular traffic. Public transportation options are lacking with no fixed route systems in the city. And the city has a limited bike and trail infrastructure to support safe, non-motorized travel to major destinations inside of Fremont. So it's not say that there aren't trail networks, but that they're not complete enough or consistent enough to provide that safe travel between these different destinations inside the city. Flood hazard, the, the twenty nineteen flood impacted both residential and commercial development in the south of the community. Planning for the city must incorporate the US Army Corps of Engineers non-structural plan for the city. Mainly to mitigate any future flood damage to properties that could be there. And then this last component is the downtown is, as I'd mentioned, there's a downtown sub area. As part of that sub area, we looked at some of the disinvestment and the competition with the major commercial corridors has a, has had a impact on the downtown and its viability as a destination for shopping, for retail, for restaurants. So something that as we move forward into the, into the sub area plan, we'll make sure that we address, you know, what some solutions might be to help turn that around. So what I want to do now, and this can be a little low tech, we're going to do some questions with the group and just, just to show our hands, we're going to, we're going to tally them up. But what we want to do is this is going to be similar to the questions that we asked tomorrow night. The format's going to be a bit different, but these will be very similar questions that we want to ask at the community workshop. Wanted to give you an opportunity to vote. I would say anybody in the room can, can vote on this, right? We're, except for you guys in the back. So the first question that we want to ask are what type of new development would you like to see in Fremont? So for each one of these questions, you get, you get two votes. So you can vote twice for this question. And we'll just do a show of hands. What type of new development would you like to see in Fremont? So who would like to see residential development as a, as a new use in the future? Go ahead and raise your hand. We're going to count it off. All right. So I see one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. All right. Who would like to see retail as new development? Retail. Okay. So one, two, three, four, five. So restaurants, these would be restaurants, bars, you know, eateries, types, things like that. Who would like to see that? So one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. All right. Entertainment. One, two, three. Service uses. So that could be, that could be auto service that could be, but that could also be, you know, where you get a haircut. Nails done, all that kind of stuff. All right, one. Office. One, industrial. One, two, three, four. And then is there another, is there one that we missed? Everybody want to raise their hand and throw out another use that we might have missed? No? Okay. So now what's important here and we'll, we'll have these up on a board. So everybody can see when we do this tomorrow night at the workshop, but the idea is, you know, although maybe office only got one or two votes, that's okay. It's still an office, it's still a use that we need to address. We need to provide recommendations for. But this just helps us prioritize clearly residential is an area that we need to look at. You know, restaurant and retail is something that we need to be looking at, but all of these uses will be a part of the appropriate land use mix that make up the, the land use plan moving forward. All right. So to drill down and be a little bit more specific, we want to ask what type of commercial development would you like to see in Fremont? So assuming you want to see commercial development in Fremont, what type of, of use is the most appropriate? So again, I would do a show of hands, retail. So one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, nine, 10, 11. All right. Who would like to see restaurants? Okay, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. All right. You get two votes for this as well. Three, if I'm counting correctly. Entertainment. Two votes. So one, two, three, four, five. All right, service. One, two, three, four. Okay, office. One. Okay. And then again, is there a, a commercial use that we might be missing? Is there an other, something else that you're thinking? Or maybe you weren't sure if it fit into a category? Okay. Can you describe some of the challenges facing the neighborhoods of Fremont? So what are some of the challenges that the neighborhood? The neighborhoods face here in Fremont. So quality of house, again, two votes. So quality of housing. One. I'll give you a chance to read these. Going quick on you. How about property maintenance? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. How about lack of housing options? That could include senior housing, affordable housing, et cetera. So one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Homelessness. Okay. Rising costs, that could be housing, construction improvements. Okay. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14. Okay. All right. And then again, is there any other, are there any other challenges that you see that these neighborhoods are facing that we should, we could include in this poll for tomorrow? Something that we should consider. Challenges facing the pedestrian and bike and public transit in, in Fremont. So again, I'll give you a few seconds here to read them. All right. So the challenges that the pedestrian, bike and public transit face here in Fremont. Lack of connected trail network. One, two, three, one, two, three, four, five, six. Incomplete sidewalk network. So incomplete connections for the sidewalk. One, two, three. Senior transportation options. One. Two, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Access to public transportation. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Lack of on-street bike lanes and routes. One, two. And then safer intersections and crosswalks. One, two, three, four, five, five. Okay. And then again, is there any other bike or pedestrian or transit related issue that we're not addressing? We're asking the right question? All right. Last, last question here. So challenges that are, challenge auto oriented transportation faces in Fremont. So when you're thinking of vehicular or truck, or truck traffic, that multimodal perspective. So give you a second to read these. So show of hands, who thinks traffic congestion is one of the challenges that auto oriented transportation faces in Fremont? So traffic congestion. Traffic. Nobody. Who thinks heavy trucks on city streets is a major issue, key issue? One. Lack of roadway maintenance. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11. Lack of roadway connections. So where roads are supposed to meet. One, one, two. All right, two. Freight traffic in residential areas. So lack of quiet zones impacts to the residential areas. So one, two, three, four, five. Train operations on vehicular travel. So one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. Is your hand up? I think his hand's up. Maybe not. Nine, sorry, nine. And the last one was key intersection safety. So just where, yeah, okay. One, two. Okay, two. All right, that's great. So and again, at the workshop, what we'll do and we'll collect this information. This is really helpful. And what we'll start to do is this will help us prioritize some of these issues. So clearly roadway maintenance is, is a real issue, something that we want to make sure that we're addressing and certainly something Jason's, he's taking notes on, his team's going to want to address. And that'll, that'll be helpful. So that information's going to help kind of guide some of these recommendations. And then again, tomorrow, this will be something that'll help the group, what they're going to do after these questions at the community workshop is move into small groups. And they'll be working in tables of groups of three to five people. And in those groups, they'll be able to answer a series of questions that are on a sheet that are similar to these, but a little bit more guided. It's going to kind of walk them through the process and they'll have a big map in front of them, but they're going to be marking off, you know, specifically, this is where these issues occur or you know, I think this area should be redeveloped. Or I love this park and I don't know how to get to it. It's, it's not easy. We need bike lanes or we need to be able to walk there with sidewalks, things like that. So that's, that's a big part of what we're going to be doing tomorrow night. So these questions are like a primer to get people thinking about, you know, all these different challenges that a comprehensive plan can address. So next steps, tomorrow night, we have the community wide vision workshop. All are welcome to attend. Anybody you see between now and tomorrow, please encourage them to meet us from six thirty to eight to do this community wide visioning workshop. On Thursday, we have a workshop from six thirty to eight geared towards the Hispanic population. We're going to have translators there. We're going to do as much as we can with some of the boards that we have set up to ask the questions that we feel are questions that we need to address again inside that conference of plan. Then looking ahead a little bit further in May, we're going to deliver the draft existing conditions memo to staff for their review. We're going to work through some of the, the summaries and the compiling of all the information we're going to collect this week. And then we'll start moving into the vision, the goals and the land use framework. And then further down the line in August, we'll be preparing the draft housing and economic development framework. And then looking out towards the end of August, early September, are when we'll be preparing the, the downtown sub area. So those are the stages of the project to get us through basically into September. If there's any questions about this timeline, we can come back to this. And then just as I'd mentioned before, if you see anybody from the public or if anybody's curious about how they can get involved, there's still many ways to get involved with this project. We're, we're sort of at the beginning of the community engagement component as it relates to some of the planning and the visioning side of this. So you can participate by going to hla.fyi/fremont, get involved. I've seen flyers all over. I know they're all over in this building as well. But that link will take them to an online portal, a website. There's a lot of different ways to participate. There's a community questionnaire. There's a, a tool that's called map that's social that allows you to, using a map, drop a point, you know, specifically, as I'd mentioned. You know, I love this park. How do I access this park? Or we go here all the time. There's no restaurants around here. I wish there were more restaurants. So any type of feedback that someone wants to provide and it's geospatial data. So that's data we're able to import into our maps, into our models to use to give us a better sense of where we need to be targeting specific, you know, uses or roadway improvements, you know, all those different aspects. So with that, I want to thank you. Thanks for giving us your time tonight. We appreciate it. And then we were just going to open it up. If there's any questions or comments, things that we should consider as we continue on this phase. Again, we're sort of wrapping up this homework phase of the project and we're starting to move into planning. So we haven't written any plan recommendations yet. But after this week, once we've summarized everything that we've, we've heard while we were here, we'll start moving into, you know, plan recommendations and starting to bring back to you some, some solutions that we see. Oh, yeah. So are there any questions? This is what Jackie produced just based, so you can imagine with more people, we'll have this tomorrow. Oh gosh. Something like this where the whole group can see without that one word that you filled out when you walked in. We're going to have index cards of the community workshop. Everybody's going to be able to provide a word. And through the course of this workshop, we'll, we'll, we'll develop this just so they can see where people are focusing. People are focusing on the people. These are things that, you know, they consider to be real strengths, like the assets of Fremont, you know, people, economic development, the youth, the community, hard work, the opportunity, jobs. These are great. I mean, I think this is always important to remember the things that you're doing well. So when we write these recommendations, we don't lose sight of the things that you do well. We build off of those. That's important. So we threw a lot of information at you there. If you have any questions about any components of this, we're, we're here to ask. Otherwise, I think we have some questions we'd like to ask.
Nick, can you just explain a little bit about the visioning workshops again? So they're going to be in small groups. They're going to get a topic or, and then they're going to discuss. And then there'll, there'll be a presenter. Is that how that's going to go at these?
Yeah. So I can, I'll, I'll kind of walk you through what it'll be. So when they walk in, when, when people walk in, we'll have a, an entry table, you know, we'll introduce ourselves, talk a little bit about what we're here to do tonight and we'll guide them to, you know, where they're going to sit. And there's two different aspects to this. To this visioning workshop. The first part is we're going to present, similar to what we talked about here tonight, it'll be condensed a little bit. And it'll just be high level. This is what we've been doing. This is what we're hearing inside of the existing condition or what we're seeing inside of the existing conditions. And then we'll, we'll ask a couple of those questions to get people, just again, it's, it's not necessarily to get all of that feedback. It's more so too, to get them just thinking about all the different issues that we face when we're looking at a comprehensive plan. It's not, it's not just land use. It's not just parks. It's all of these different components working together. So there'll be this presentation similar to this. And then after that, we're going to, we're going to break them out into these tables. It's going to be like dodgeball rules where like count off people, send them to their tables. And then once they're there, we have a worksheet that they're going to, they're going to go through as a team and start to fill out. It'll help us address, you know, what should the vision be? This group's going to work on establishing a vision. One of the questions will be, you know, in the residential areas, what types of improvements would you like to see? Or what types of uses are appropriate? And they're going to work through that. And that's going to coincide with a map that they'll have sitting right next to them, a big twenty four by thirty six map. And as they're talking about residential uses, they can be marking on a map. This is where I think that should go. Or this is an area that I think needs more attention or, you know, property maintenance down here is a real challenge. So they'll go through each one of these key, like you said, key topic areas, so residential, commercial, industrial, community facilities, there's even another. There's even another, if somebody doesn't feel like what they want to talk about is captured in those, in those areas. But that, that takeaway from those meetings will be a better understanding from our perspective of what the community wants the vision to be, what you're working towards, what you'd like to see. And then specifically, what are some projects? What are improvements? Or what are opportunities that we should be considering when we start preparing our plan? Any other questions? Sure. Yeah, it's a good part. It varies. I know that's the easy thing to say. It really does vary. I mean, sometimes we get 30, 40 people. Sometimes you get 400 people. It just depends on sort of the makeup of the community, you know, what, how often they typically participate. One of the things that we're trying to do, and I think again, just balancing with COVID, some of the challenges that we see, we've tried to offer all of this online as well. A lot of these questionnaires, the mapping capabilities. But it's, it's difficult to say. I know Jennifer and her team, I know we've worked really hard to get the message out there, but yeah, it does range. To answer your question. Yeah, it's been, it's been pretty good. I mean, we got, yeah, we got 92 responses, which I know doesn't sound, it's not statistically valid. I mean, that almost never happens on a comprehensive plan-type project, but 92 participants. And again, we were a little slow to start because we didn't get to do that big community kickoff meeting that we would typically, and that's, that's normally a good way to get it all kind of started, get the word out. But we, we did reposition that, and that's gonna come up when we start talking about the land use and the housing frameworks. And I do think when we have that community workshop then too, we'll get some more interest because you're starting to respond to things. It's not just, you know, these are the problems. It's, you know, we've talked a lot about the issues and the problems. These are some solutions, you know, are we on point? Is this what we should be focusing on? You know, should we pivot somewhere else? So we're doing the best that we can to, to continue to get more people. There's a lot of opportunities out there. So again, I mean, I know I sound like a broken record, but whatever you can do to, you know, poke your neighbor and make sure that they show up tomorrow night, it's, it's helpful. Anybody else? Yes. Yes. At this point, I don't believe we've received any DIY kits back yet. Not yet. And that's another one where, I mean, those could all come in at one time. I would continue to push that out there. I would have thought in this, kind of where we're at now, that that would be a viable solution. I would think most people would. Maybe through the summer, it becomes more realistic. So hopefully over the next couple of months, we see some of those starting to come back. So I would say at this point, it would be ideal if we were receiving those in June. So I would say by June, that would be, that would be great. And, and it's not to say that if we got one in July, I mean, anytime we get any feedback, it's helpful and we can incorporate it into where we're at. But I would say June would be great if we could get the DIY kits back. It's about when we'll stop receiving some of the questionnaires online and transition to other ways for people to participate on the website. So that would be, that would be really helpful. Sure. So I'd like, I'd like to say we're giving a lot of opportunity for people to participate and give us that feedback. We are sort of starting to ramp up. We haven't started yet, but we are gonna start ramping up and building off. So what we say for the vision and the goals will lead to how we write the land use, the transportation, the community facilities. And those are framework plans, and that's gonna get an opportunity for people to provide feedback. Then that's gonna get stacked up by some of the more specific recommendations, the implementation strategies. That's gonna have an opportunity to get reviewed. But at each, I would say like each logical stage or break, there's an opportunity for public input. There's an opportunity to meet with, you know, both of these groups, the planning commission and city council, there's always gonna be an opportunity for someone to say, boy, I feel like we missed something. Now, I mean, it's something radical happens, I don't know. But I mean, for the most part, we're always trying to take that feedback and make those revisions along the way. Even when we get to the end and there's an open house for this plan, you know, we, we hear, we hear input and that's, that's, you have to take that in, otherwise there's no reason to have those meetings. So if we get something from someone who says, boy, I really feel like you missed the mark on this commercial area, I want you to relook at it. If that's something that the planning commission or city council or staff agrees with, I mean, we, we're flexible. We can make those changes. It's not, I only read, and I, I know this always sounds, it can sound cheesy, but it's sincere in that this isn't our, our plan. I mean, you hired us to come in and use our experience to help you draft this report. It is your, your plan, and you have to spend the next 20 years implementing this plan. So I want to make sure it's the tool that you need to get your jobs done. And I want to make sure that the residents feel like they were heard and that this was their voice and that's what we're drafting. So I mean, again, if someone shows up at the end and we missed it, we, we gotta fix it.
Hey Brett, can you use your microphone?
So I'm, the interactive dialogue, I think, is really important. And having the public have an opportunity to hear the directions that you're taking because of input you've already received.
Yes.
And being able to react to that as to, yeah, that likes, I'm in agreement with that, or, you know, I really didn't think that's the way we were going. This didn't get considered. You ought to. That kind of interactive feedback, hopefully the public would be engaged in because this would be an important opportunity for them to have multiple opportunities to suggest change, not only what we have, but what you're proposing.
Right, yeah. Our, our goal, the way we've scoped this, our goal is not to drop. After this, we're not gonna go back and write a 200-page plan and drop it on the community and say, you know, read through this. It's gonna be in stages. And it's gonna start off smaller with the vision, the goals, because if you get that right, the rest of this is a lot more clear on what you're trying to write for. If we, if we don't get it right there, we gotta, we gotta get it right, and then we can move on to the next step. And then the other part, the, the thing that you had said too, that I, I do think is important is this, this ties in directly with what Jackie and her team are working on in the UDC. And they're a little bit further behind on the timeline in terms of, once we've established, you know, what the land use plan needs to be, then they're, they're gonna start reviewing, what is the, what is the zoning, what do the zoning districts need to do? Are there changes to uses? Are there changes to development standards? Are there other things that we should be thinking about? So all of this is sort of in a, a kind of back and forth, and I want to make sure that the public is also involved in, in those processes too. So, yeah, a lot of, a lot of opportunities for people to be involved and give us their feedback. That's critical.
Nick, can you talk a little bit more about that? Because I know there's been a lot of discussion with council in regards to, you know, to the comp plan and the UDC and some of the, you know, problems we maybe had in the past. And, and maybe your experience with some other cities doing, doing this and, you know, what's worked and how you can apply that to Fremont?
Yep. I would say the thing, honestly, Jack and I work on the most right now, other than just zoning projects, are comprehensive plan alignments. So that's working with communities to evaluate their current comprehensive plan and one to determine if that's even the plan that they wanted or deserved. And then if it, if it is the direction they want to go, how out of alignment is the zoning code to that comprehensive plan? Because a lot of times, those are never written together. If it's done well, the comp plan was written first, and the zoning ordinance comes back and basically codifies the components of a comprehensive plan that you want to. Not everything, but enough. And things that a code doesn't want to be prescriptive on, you can always point back to the comp plan and say, this is what the comp plan says. So as long as you're in alignment with our comp plan and our zoning code, you know, we're, we're all gonna be on the same page. And that is the point of these two tools. And, and it's important that the comp plan does not tread into the zoning realm. Sometimes that starts to happen and that gets very convoluted and confusing. So we're, we're well aware of that. We work in some communities where I think that, that gets a little lost. So I know we're, we're being, we're very cognizant of that. And the way that this is structured, the way that you issued the RFPs, breaking these into three, two projects. I, I think the long-range transportation plan and the land use, the comprehensive planner are more aligned. The comp plan has to, or the zoning has to come in afterwards and kind of make sense of it and make it regulatory. So there, there are a lot of communities that do this approach. That staggered timeline is very important. Jackie needs the time that it takes to draft these regulations. Once the community's told us what they want to achieve, and I think we have a good, a good model set up for this project.
I was thinking about something you said earlier about how we got kind of a slow start with the community engagement. If I recall, John C Fremont Days is on. Right?
Yes.
Are you guys gonna have a presence around there, around that time period?
I, I missed that part.
Around John C Fremont Days, you guys gonna have a presence?
Oh, um, that is something we can work with Jennifer or her team on and see how we could set that up. I mean, there's something that we could do, even if you have a booth or something. Yeah, that'd be a good way to get some feedback. Sure. Like gotta get people when they're standing in lines. Yeah, and I, maybe I shouldn't have used that word. Not necessarily slow to start. We just missed one key workshop. And I know we'll catch it up and we'll put it into the process. It's just, it's one that, you know, traditionally we would have done, would have been a very big kickoff. But tomorrow night's event will really serve as that. This is our first opportunity with the community in person hosting an event. So this will be, we're excited. Any other questions? Comments? Faults? You have a couple of minutes, right?
Maybe this is a question for Jason in regards to the southeast Beltway. I mean, obviously that completion will be in this plan, even though it's not done yet. I mean, go ahead, yeah.
Yes. Hi, Jason Carby with HTR. Yeah, the, the southeast Beltway is anticipated to be completed. I think it's, it's included in the state's program through complete construction. So that's anticipated to be part of the system as our starting point.
Okay.
And so we're kind of, that's gonna be one of the elements that we assume is a done deal. And that we all be, you know, going through our criteria and trying to evaluate, where do we go beyond that for this transportation plan?
Thank you. Is there anything for Jason? I mean, you're doing our transportation plan, right?
Yeah, correct. Yeah.
Yep. So I mean, do you want to speak a little bit to that?
Yeah, sure. No, thank you. So yeah, through the, through the engagement process thus far, we've kind of started to get some ideas of what, you know, we're talking about the visioning with the comp plan. The transportation plan, similarly, we're looking for the, you know, the goals and objectives, and how, how does that guide the decision-making process as we go through the transportation plan? And so I think a lot of the things we heard about were some of the topics that, that Nick brought up in terms of our, you know, our questions that we asked you. I had a couple other topics I might throw out there and just get feedback on some things we have heard up to this point. One of them, from a transportation perspective, was, and, and part of this kind of overlaps with, with development and comp plan too, but city gateway aesthetics, kind of as you enter the town. We, we've heard a few comments throughout here about that being one of the areas of interest. Is that, are we on to something there? Okay. Any other discussion on that or some, something to look at? Okay, the other one, railroad quiet zones. We've heard a comment or two about the desire maybe to have more expand, understanding that, you know, freight obviously, obviously plays a a really important role in our community, but there's also, you know, some conflicts with, with, with how we live and how we, how we commute. And, you know, all that. So railroad quiet zone sounds like another area of interest to at least examine as a part of this plan. I, I think that the other topics we talked about, you know, it doesn't surprise me to hear you say it's probably more important for us to have reliable transportation in terms of, of, you know, trains not blocking vehicle crossings rather than we always have congestion every day at a certain spot. That I think those conflicts are probably a higher priority. So that, that was good to hear. So yeah, we'll go through that data. I don't know. Any other questions on the transportation plan?
Councilman Jensen.
I just asked on the, on the highway 30 extension too, they're just working, they're just north and west of North Bend right now. I mean, I'm assuming that's all part of this also. It'll be, they should be in the next 18 to 24 months, I believe.
Yep, and yeah, yeah, anything that's in the state's transportation improvement programs means basically they've lined up the funding for and it's guaranteed. You know, those are usually, I think they have a four-year guaranteed, you know, I say guaranteed, but they have funding lined up. And all of that will be included in the, in the transportation analysis as well. So.
Roundabouts. I hope you have a camera when you build those two. People are so confused, and I got a question about that this morning. As you all know, the Blair one is, huh, some days it's amazing what goes around that corner, especially semi-trailers. But who, how did that get in the plan or who, who brought that up?
The, when you say the Blair roundabout, you mean the one, the, the highway 133, 31 in Blair?
Yeah.
Well, that was up in there, there maybe 15 years. I kind of remember that getting built. Yeah, I don't know whose idea that was originally. I know it's, it's on us. It's the junction of two state routes. And so I think it used to come into town, and I think they had some safety issues. As I recall, again, this is, this is going back in the time, you know, way, way, a little, little ways back. Stretching my memory a little bit, but I, I believe they had some safety issues with the, with the, you know, tra- traffic coming into town, going 60 miles an hour, and then needing to slow down and safely navigate that intersection. So I, I think that was their, that was their preferred design, and I can't, I can't tell you much more project history about it. And I can't tell you specifically about any roundabouts in Fremont. But I'm sure somebody can. Yep, yep. And so we're, we're hoping to be able to get into the funding, look at the funding, understand what gets spent on maintenance, understand what, how the funding works for new roadways and talk about what could feasibly be included in, over the life cycle of the plan. Yeah. So we have been coordinating with Dave Godeckin on that.
Councilman, you're. With regards to your statement about gateway entry, whatever, and the Beltway, et cetera, one of the questions that I had, because I think we saw this maybe down in the Wahoo area, it took them forever and a day to get the four-lane build around Wahoo. And in part, I'm sure that the town didn't really want the traffic to leave the inner city because they, they lost retail business and whatever. So as a part of your study for aesthetics or whatever for entry into the city, are you also analyzing how we would do that or how much we would do that with regards to inviting the public in because of the economic impacts that people driving around Fremont rather than through Fremont have as it relates to our traffic patterns and?
That could definitely be one of the recommendations or policies that comes out of this could be a recommendation to come up with consistent branding for encouraging people to stop as they, as they drive through. Yes.
Because it not only, not always an economic thing, it does change the traffic flows and the amount of volumes that you would expect through the city, which obviously would change the character of some of the streets and roadways that we have and that kind of thing.
We'll be looking at that. Yeah, that work. So we touched briefly on the, the travel model. It's, it's part of the, what Nebraska Department of Roads or Department of Transportation wants us to do as a part of this plan and the funding was to build that traffic model. And so we're actually, we're, we're pretty much done with the getting it working. We need to wait for the future land use to talk about what the future looks like in terms of traffic patterns. But we will look at that, what the opening of the southeast Beltway does or bypass does for, for traffic patterns through town.
And so you're helping the city make a recommendation or the state make recommendations as to our traffic or street designations and traffic laws? Specifically, you're doing that?
Where you're not, we are not under contract with the state to make any recommendations about, yeah, does, street designations or anything like that? No.
Okay.
We, I think part of it might be looking at the functional classification of streets in, in the future when that happens. But in terms of state versus local, no, I don't think that's not part of what we're doing. Anything else? Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Conference of plan, unified development code? Get Jason back up here.
I don't have a question per se, except maybe a request. Is there a way to, you had a page up there with a little chart. Maybe I'm the only one that couldn't read the chart. Is, do we have access to your summary?
Yes, so. Yes. So, um, the memo, based on feedback that we get while we're out here, we're working towards, I think it was in the first week of May, second week of May, we're going to produce an existing conditions memo. It's going to include all, all of those graphics, um, the tables, the charts that we provided in this PowerPoint, a- as well as more detailed than just the bullet points. That'll be provided to everyone in this room. Um, we'll also post that on the project website. So that'll be information that's available to anybody who wants to see it. Again, that's, that's sort of a foundational understanding before we move into the next step. So yes, that'll be made available. Yeah, those numbers were tiny. Sorry.
Go ahead, Dev.
Um, one thing on the comprehensive plan, I think we need to make sure we drive home is that that thing can shift anytime. And I think over the years in planning, I'm sure Jennifer can go along with me on this. We've watched from lawyers to elected officials come in and think, well, this is the way it is. This is what it says. It can't change. But that's not what a comp plan is, correct?
Correct. Um, I mean, it is a, it is a living document and it does set the tone for what you want to achieve in the next 20 years. Kind of broad, high level recommendations. But if at any point, you know, a particular issue comes up or, you know, through a series of community events or city council meetings, something's clearly not working, um, you can always amend the comprehensive plan and, and adjust the recommendations inside that document. It's not realistic to think that a document like this shouldn't be amended. I mean, it shouldn't take 20 years before you make that adjustment again. A, a lot of times too, and we'll, we'll provide at the end of this, an implementation matrix that's going to, um, take many of the recommendations from the plan and flip them into more action language, very, very concise and clear. Um, you know, what you need to do checklist wise. And if at some point you feel like either we're not addressing these issues and there's something wrong, like where there's a reason we're not getting to these. Or, I mean, we've seen communities, they've accomplished so much that their 20 year plan, they got done in six years and they call us and say, we need to make amendments. Um, or you, or you make staff amendments. I mean, there's, there's things that you can do. Um, but that's a good point. And then you want to make sure that you're monitoring that, but this isn't set in stone and it shouldn't be treated like that. Good point.
Councilman Yerger.
I don't know if you're doing UDC presentation or you're just taking a question, but I have one question because we've been doing several changes or modifications to UDC on the fly. Um, after originally having been discussed with lawyers as to, we should have be in hiatus until we get a new UDC. Yeah. And so it's my understanding that, uh, the consultants as well as the city have asked for, uh, UDC changes to be implemented now. My question is, over the next year and a half, how do we ensure the integrity of what we have to work with as a UDC code over the next year and a half? If in fact, we don't change every section of the code that reflects on changes that we're making piecemeal now. And isn't it better to hold off on as many of those as possible? And incorporate them in the new document rather than to be changing on the fly and not having consistent code that we can apply for a year and a half.
So I think the expedited amendments that were made initially at the beginning of this process were really meant to deal with some sticky pain points, uh, for staff. For you all as you're administering the code, making decisions based on, uh, the language of the codes. We were hoping to clean those up upfront, uh, to ensure that, uh, you all had the, a tool to use in the interim before the, uh, full UDC was revised. I do think holding off on any major changes, any major revisions or amendments to the UDC would make sense until we're able to do so in a comprehensive manner, along with the, the policy recommendations of the comprehensive plan. So I do think it was important to clean up those couple of items through the expedited amendments process. Uh, but going forward, uh, keeping sort of a hold off on those, uh, so we can do that as more of a comprehensive, um, approach. Uh, but knowing that there's going to be items brought before you all, maybe text amendment requests, maybe that come from residents or business owners, uh, that you'll have to address. Um, and we can definitely incorporate those into, uh, the new UDC, um, as we're going through that process.
Is there any other questions? Thank you, uh, Nick, Jackie, Jason, Jennifer, everyone involved in the comprehensive plan and, and, uh, being here this week and, uh, looking forward to those visioning workshops and, uh, we get as, as much turnout as we can. And, uh, appreciate, uh, your work. And I know this is a, a marathon, not a sprint. So if we do one step at a time, right?
Yes.
So.
Well, thank you. We appreciate you giving us your time tonight. And yeah, we're looking forward to these next couple of days here in Fremont.
Very good. Thank you.
I would make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Need a second? Councilman Jensen?
I will second.
Cast your votes.
Motion carries eight zero to adjourn the council, city council meeting.
The special city council and planning commission meeting is adjourned. Does planning commission, oh, I'm sorry. Planning commission should adjourn yourself. Thank you. Motion to adjourn from planning. Please vote.
Landholm, Larso, Nielsen, Washburn, Lathrop, motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much.